There's the paper copy of everything.
Okay. Of this, of what we're doing?
Yeah, what we're doing.
Okay.
Well, since we don't have a chair yet, well, it's six o'clock, a minute or two passed. We'll start the meeting, this is the planning commission for the city of Goodland. We have three new members. And now I'm forgetting the entire names, so if you can introduce yourselves and start.
Yeah, I'm Grady Bonso, I've been here in Goodland for about twenty-six years. I'm new, like you said, I just thought this is an opportunity to kind of step in, help out the city, and work out the weather service, so that's my, that's me.
Matt McKenzie, lifelong Goodland resident, recently moved back. I work full-time for Pioneer Hybrid as an agronomist and part-time as a building contractor here in town, so we own some property on Main Street and constantly making improvements there, so I thought this was a good opportunity to get involved with the city as well, maybe offer a little bit of my help and be a part of something else.
Okay.
I'm Dennis Sneethan, and I've been, lived here off and on all my life, I grew up here, and I'll be sixty-eight, so, but I plan on, I don't know, maybe I can make a difference here.
Sure.
Get us all to grow and whatnot.
Okay. I'm Kim Brown, I'm the city manager for the city of Goodland, and then Jeff Dinkel, building official, he will be, either one of us will be the staff members that will be assisting and put together, and a lot of the stuff goes through the building official as far as what to prepare for your consideration, so. And I'll keep going, just regarding the next one, is there anyone here for public comment? Just on the regular? That's good. We don't. We'll try to keep it stumbling along at this point. The first thing we need to do is elect a chair and a vice chair, and that's what was included in your packets as far as the planning commission bylaws. The chair, it says within those bylaws, it says the chair shall preside at all meetings and public hearings of the planning commission and shall decide all points of order and procedure, should actually certify, that means sign a signature on plans or plans if need be, and transmit reports and recommendations of planning commission to the governing body. So that's what the chair is. The vice chair, the vice chair shall assume the duties of the chair in his or her absence. And then, there's a secretary, but it says that duties may be fulfilled by city staff, so that's, I would recommend that, and I'm used to staff providing that role in the bylaws. But in order to have the meeting go, in order, that's what we had as the first item on the agenda, so how it usually works is someone may offer, or someone may ask to appoint another person or put a motion forward to appoint another person to be chair.
I'm willing to offer the chair. Let these guys.
Well.
Okay.
Then Dennis, go ahead and move and say, I move that.
I move that we appoint you to the chair.
And then, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Matt, you're the chair. Now you can ask who wants to be the vice chair.
Yeah, all right. So with that, any offers for vice chair? Dennis appointing that Grady.
Okay, sure, I'll take it.
You give it that, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to be, to be the vice chair.
All right, I'll second that one. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, Grady, vice chair.
Okay.
And then do we need a motion or anything for, to say, well, do you see city staff for the secretary?
If it's just a consensus, it's a planning commission.
If that, if you guys are, okay.
All right.
Now I guess I get to take over, huh?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Don't have to, we really can run it together.
Yeah, that's fine. So I see the next thing on the agenda is a variance request from Jacob Lees.
On 418 Main Street, or the properties at 418 Main Street. And Jacob is here tonight, he's submitting an application which was included in your packet, talking about this request, and Jacob, do you want to say a few things about your request first before I start going through the different items?
I would say that it's something that I just think could have been the primary end of business under the legislature moving down downtown, the X-ray base will allow me to grow more, more tools, materials, things like that. Allow me, you know, maybe some overflow, which might be nice. I'd also tell you to get a video of that and ask for the hardware shop, something like that.
Okay. The applicant is, it was in the background, it was basically proposing to build a new garage, requesting the site to be fifteen hundred square feet, thirty by fifty building, which is, and since the garage is unattached to the residence, it comes into the standards for accessory buildings.
And the little bit taller to the peak is because of the actual length or width?
So the, I had the CP because I'm building sixteen foot.
Oh, okay.
So we have the request and have the section within the city code that states that regarding accessory uses. And so, and then it also provides in the code guidance as the approval or denial of a requested variance. And the board may grant a variance only if it makes findings that all the following requirements have been satisfied. And it has the six various items listed there, needs to be unique, the variance requested requires us from conditions which are unique to the property in question. Adjacent property, the granting of variance will not materially be detrimental or adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners. It's a hardship if it isn't, it's in the public, it will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or general welfare of the community. And the spirit and intent, granting the request of variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. And the variance request is as minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land or structure. So. You filled out the application, the staff comments on it that both Jeff and myself completed. It's obviously, the application's in the order. The garage, as you said, back from the appropriate property lines, appropriate distance. The applicant will also plan on eliminating an existing curb and sidewalk and then end up just pouring back a small driveway to the garage. It's all, it's difficult to meet the requirement of being unique to the property, but that's for almost any property in Goodland because all of our lots are rectangle or square in size, that's what I'm saying. It's unique to a property, but we haven't had any comments from neighbors or anybody come in and object to the variance. All the neighbors were notified by mail, and we actually had a couple city employees that were part of the people that were notified, and they did receive the notice in the mail, so that at least is some confirmation that everybody was notified. The additional notification was posted, there was a posting in the newspaper as well as on the city's website. So everybody's notified about it, we haven't received any comments, any negative responses about the proposed variance. The other thing is this property is directly across, I mean, the property is zoned as R1 residential, the intent of the district is low density residential development, but right across the street to the south is C2, and we don't have a zone, one thing to make sure we get up here. But right across the street from that block now is C2 Central Business District. So, and then as part of that, was included in your staff report that it does state that loading docks, trash enclosures, outdoor stores, and similar facilities and functions shall be incorporated, and then at the very end of it, it says so that the visual and acoustic impacts of these functions are reduced to as great as it extends as possible, and are out of view from adjacent properties. And that's probably the primary purpose for Jacob requesting this, is yes, it's for his business purpose and it's in a residential area, but there aren't going to be any customers coming to his business, his residential property, and it's more just for storage of materials for his, you know, both personal and business stuff, but it'll be out of view from adjacent neighbors. So that's where I think the board could make a finding that it meets this criteria, because it's accomplishing a purpose for the neighborhood. So, on each of these, you're acting as the board of zoning deals in this case, and in Goodland, they're combined into the planning commission, but in the procedures, you'll need to make a finding on each of these, as far as uniqueness, adjacent property hardship, public interest, spirit, and then minimum variances. And then you'll make a decision on whether to approve the variance or not approve of variances. So that's the procedure for you, and you have, and do you have any questions regarding the staff before, or information?
I think we got a couple that I had, just re bring those characters in, and we said, so that's good to know, and I guess good to know that a couple of more city employees didn't have an objection, so that was one. It looks like from, I guess Jacob, for you, from your drawings, you're going to go longer down the back of the property, is that the plan? Yeah, so you from the street really won't look any different than one within the specs that they're bringing.
I know, but would just be extending backward deeper into the property.
I guess, only question I have is like, are there products you get delivered and stuff, is that like, you're like blocking the road?
No, so I, my materials from either American Electric out of Cook or Stanley out of Hayes, and each of my delivery men will have a key, so they can go ahead and utilize the overhead door or anything, there should never be anything out on the curb or the sidewalk, I thought they'll be able to bring everything in, or keep it out of the way of any pedestrians walking by, street traffic.
Dennis, any questions?
I don't know, it's good to me.
I did receive one upon the call from the variance request, and it was just a question. Nobody's, it's a new thing, I mean, you need to be quite.
Wondering what it was.
It just, they wanted explanation, the hard place getting tore down or robbed, that's what they were questioning. I explained the process to them and what was going on, but they had no complaint on it, so the only comment I had gotten.
Do you have a question? Because I'm, we gotta do electrical and stuff, like the city electrical, who pays for the city, or, you know, like if they got a new electrical line and stuff like that?
I'd have to check with Dustin on that for sure.
Excuse me, if, they wouldn't have to move the main line. Now, if there's a service line or something else, usually I, no homeowner, or they need additional connection, then that's the property owner's responsibility. Is there anything different than what you?
The only thing that I've seen from the dealings I've had with the local power guys is the incoming line from the pole to the house is usually covered by the city, I don't know of special circumstances, like if my building was to impede on that and that's why it needed to move, whether it would follow me, which has a hat or not, it's just not something I've run into yet. I'm sure I'll find out in due time.
Right, I comment on that as well.
Yeah?
Okay, so we'll build a few shops and tail and stuff, so the city always brings the electricity to the pole, and lately they've been putting their meters at the pole, so from the pole to the house or the structure, is it fogged or land on there?
Because it's after the meter.
Because it's after the meter. And even some that have tore down, that's been on the house before, city has, Dustin's request, have always been on the utility pole and on the house for maybe cost and/or efficiency for the city, and either underground or overheads, so.
That makes sense. All right, well, I guess we don't have any more questions, we probably need to go through each of the standards one by one, all right? So.
Yeah.
Kind of finding, so uniqueness, like you said, Ken, it's hard to find uniqueness, but it would rest, I mean, if that's how the whole city is, then it's just where it is, right?
Yeah.
So, discussion wise, guys, I guess it just needs to know where you're at, but.
I don't know. It looks like for these, yeah.
Ken, do we need a motion on every single?
No, no.
Or just, you know, just check, like?
Yeah.
Well, so I think as far as uniqueness is concerned, it sounds like we're all in agreement that that's approved. Adjacent property, for me, that's, you know, what the neighbors think, and we heard that that is all okay, so I think that one is approved. Hardship, if being able to build the building that Jacob wants and/or not is going to have an impact on your business, I would say that's, you know, it would be much better to have it right on your property, so I think that one's approved. Public interest, it doesn't appear that there's any health, safety, or any of those other general welfare concerns. You know, the standard says adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, so I assume, you know, that's all, probably bigger city kind of stuff, but where he's building, you can just own that property, but I don't think there's any concern there. Okay, that one looks like it's approved, and then spirit and intent, I don't think we're doing anything in opposition to the general spirit and intent of zoning regulations, given that Jacob's thought this process out and has done the nice job going on the application and going through the whole discussion and thing, so we're good on that one too. And then minimum variance, sounds like this is the least amount that you could get away with and make it fit on the property, so I'd say we're going for the minimum here, so approve that one as well. So with that, it looks like we're down to a motion, so if you guys look in your packets, there's a recommended motion and an alternate motion. So I just probably need one of you guys to make the motion.
This is one case where the chair, you can make the motion if you want, that you can ask, just on general principles.
Well, I will go ahead and move that we approve the proposed variance for the new accessory building of fifteen hundred square feet and a maximum height of no more than twenty-two feet at the peak of the slope road. Okay, any further discussion? Do it. All those, for the proposed variance?
For the proposed motion.
Proposed motion, sorry. For the motion, sorry.
Say aye.
Aye.
All those again?
All those again.
There you go.
There you go, motion passed. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is discussion of site plans. So building officials shall require that all applicants for building permits for new buildings or expansion of any existing buildings in multifamily, commercial, and industrial zoning districts be subject to site plan review and acquaintance with these regulations. Looks like there are three on the docket, so Goodland Tag at 1205 Main for redesign, KOA for site expansion of the model, and then I have one on a building I'm working on right now at 1015 Main, so with that.
Well, and what we're doing is, first of all, just kind of introduce the concept to you all, none of these are for formal approval or anything like that, it's just for discussion only. And we thought it would be a good opportunity, since we have a couple of them come up, that let them, and Goodland Tech wanted to come, and they haven't finalized their plans, but they're getting a little bit further along, I'll let the applicant speak to that, and they'll have finalized plans at that point, but there are certain criteria, the building official completes the site plan review and then submits it to the planning commission for just basically overall review, and especially if there's other criteria, so, but for tonight, this is just discussion only, and it's just, and it's site plan in the commercial districts, and especially downtown district, so that's what we had here, thought it would be a good opportunity to introduce it, and also allow the applicants to present, and maybe get a little feedback from you before they finalize their plans as a formally fulfilled building.
Yeah, so some of you guys might not be on the internet at all, so one of our founders of Goodland Tech, this is Rayanne Panarad, she's helped us with designs and things on these plans. We're having a lot of fun in growing our business and stuff, so we have about forty-five people right now, we're going to be hiring another, you know, one or thirty within the next two to three months and stuff, so things are growing for us. We purchased this building in December, last year, with the idea of having it really just be our, kind of our headquarters and training facility. Our goal and our plans and business really is just to help companies that are outside of here be able to find people to do technology work, you know, and stuff, build teams from them across the living here, so, or be able to find one or two, two to three people for every one person they can find in Denver, California, that kind of stuff, so it's a lot of exciting work and things. What we want to do is really, I've been a member for fifteen years with my family, we love the community, and what we want to do is really take a building that's really beautiful on Main Street, and, you know, and bring it back to its old glory, you know, and stuff. Originally it was an National Marister facility, where they, you know, sales and repairs and parks and all that kind of stuff there. It was also a hotel and company for a while and things, and a number of millions and stuff, so. So anyway, you know, like I said, we want to, we want to turn it into a centerpiece and, you know, something that, you know, live vision for our community and for Main Street specifically is that, you know, if I get a hundred people coming out of that thing, you know, every day to eat lunch, that's a good thing for Main Street, you know. My goal is not to buy up other things on Main Street that have, have that kind of being our anchor for our business, you know, and have things alter in the conversations we have with our clients, they grow, they see, have another building off of me, you know, so that me can be what it's designed to be, you know, and stuff. We have retail and shops and restaurants, and things that we, you know, I hear stories of what that used to be like, you know, and stuff, and I'd love to see that, you know, it'd be a good story to tell, so. But anyway, my goal here, and I think you're bringing, seeking one of that and stuff, is to, really just to get it in front of you guys, you know, just a preliminary discussion, let me hear some feedback, that kind of stuff, and also any things that would be challenging that we wouldn't know about, right, that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, so like Ben mentioned, we really want to keep the character of the original building, which was built in nineteen twenty-nine, and so one of the ways we're doing that, we look back at the historic photos and, you know, keeping the windows, bringing them back, I guess, you know, they're boarded up sort of with small windows in there now, so really bringing that character, sort of this inviting into the space, and then there's this new addition that we're hoping to sort of have, that would be, yeah, the idea of this being the whole building here, and the new additions would be embracing, sort of being able to, like, by giving the community, and, and engage with the downtown area. The presence, I have, the space would be secure and for offices, and then the public could access this space for co-working public space, this one being close to the street and then the offices as well, this is a back alley, and so this would be a private entrance and then another public entrance, so a little meeting space and, and a lounge space, sort of make it a friendly office atmosphere.
We're in one, these are this building and another building, we're moving down the road, and these are kind of shared, a little office, a little work on office spaces, you know, so you can have, ultimately you can have multiple clients in there, you know, and stuff, as far as, and we have one, our main client, Cypher Tracy, and I'm after right now, they could easily build this up, you know, and they'll open it next year and stuff, so we're having conversations with them about other possibilities and things down the road, but, you know, if you had clients where you had a client at ten, and another client at five, a team of five, and another client that had twenty and stuff, you know, you can partition these off and do things in such a way that allows them to have security for their other office space, and also be able to take advantage of conference rooms, you know, lounging spaces, those kind of things that allow them to be able to have, you know, a nice open environment, all of those, all those partitions there are glass, so it's designed to have a lot of light, you know, and also have, I don't know if you've ever heard of the woodwork type spaces that are in big cities and things, it's somewhat after that, you know, in the sense that you can, you know, a lot of glass and things, but you can also have it to work with a lot of privacy as well, you know, so. Anyway, wanted to find, like she said, there's a, there's an area, as far as all the offices are a secure environment, like my board walking in, you know, you have a big, you have a, you have near the back of your building with the front door, it's a, a space that's for, you know, training and big conference room and that kind of stuff, that can be, you can walk in from the public area, they had a meeting there that we have, we can have the public, and also have a glazing area as well, and stuff too, so, so yeah, I don't know what that is, and anything else on that?
Well, I guess, you know, obviously the glazing, we wanted to get some light as well, so we're hoping to incorporate that up for the fire, and just small windows that are set back, so in this instance, this is over six feet, and so we're hoping to be able to get that in there in order to bring in that southern light, and it'll really filter into the whole building. So yeah, and I guess are there any questions about the design? So, yeah, and I guess, are there any questions about the design?
As far as our schedule, you know, and things, you know, we're moving as fast as we can, this is like a rodeo doing something like this, so, but, but it's exciting, on the other, on the other side of that, you know, we're, we're working with a lot of different grant opportunities and different things that we're looking at as well, so, you know, we're ready to start moving forward, we're actually waiting to wait, we're able to move on some of the things, but we also pursue some opportunities to, for the next month or two, that we're waiting on, to be able to see what's going to pan out. Like I said, we want to get this money just to start facilitating some questions and things, and allow, help us, it's a stage that we're at, in order to, you know, give this, you know, a place where people can find approval, so. Any questions at all?
First of all, I was just going to say, this is awesome, man, that's great vision, and, man, I, yeah, very impressive, exactly. One question I have, obviously, because we're on Main Street, and you have the alley, what about parking? I'm sure you guys thought about that.
Yeah, that's always a challenge, it's already a challenge for us right now, we have twelve in Main, we have a lot of cars sitting there during the day and stuff, so, you know, there are, I've been in conversation with other, there's our parking lot there that, the grocery store, and stuff like that, you know, I've talked with him and stuff in the past in regards to opportunities for us to be able to use those spaces and things, you know, there's space, either street, street parking on, up and down, twelve, on the well, you know, going for about two or three blocks, you know, and stuff, on that, that's definitely something we need to figure out, I think, just as a community, you know, and stuff, to be able to help facilitate those kind of things, I think, I hope would be too, that there would be opportunity if things continue to grow for us in a way that, I hope, that there will be opportunities for others to, you know, make spaces available and stuff that will be profitable for them too, as well, you know, so.
And it gives opportunity for people to be walking in the streets.
And I, people too, you know, people ask me about parking, they ask me about housing, you know, that's a, those are problems I want to have, right, so, we'll figure it out.
And not so much a question, but just a thought, I don't know if you guys thought about this, but with the theater being just there right there, you guys looking at using that as like a tool for your training and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely have a conversation about that, you know, so, no, I think that'd be great, and it'd be perfect right in store, you know, and stuff.
Are you, are you building this all the way to the south of the block, or do you?
No, this goes to the build, the company adjacent to it, just to the south, that is the last company, yeah, so it stops there. Right now, there's a, if you look at the building straight on, just to the south, you got that kind of gate there, and, you know, and you, there's a, what's the twenty feet between the buildings right now?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven feet between the two buildings currently, we would close that in essentially and stuff. If you see that on that first picture, you see the new piece, that actually fits inside of that, that space, so.
I think I have packets that you can remove, demo.
Oh, I see it, yeah. And what about traffic and congestion with the school right there? I know that the school district doesn't use Central for a lot of classes, but I think head starts there and the administration buildings there, have you talked to them about any concerns they have there? I mean, they understand, bringing, just bringing a lot of employees right in near the center, so, just curious.
I mean, I've talked to Mr. Vermin, I mean, he's excited about the whole thing in general and stuff, we haven't specifically talked about that, you know, currently, the whole east side of Main, we have thirteen, you know, on a daily basis, there's one, one or two cars that park there, right? So, obviously, and I think what we would do too, in regards to parking as well, I mean, it's just totally issue from the, you know, and stuff, but it would be advantageous for us to keep our parking on Main Street, that's not for void parking, right? And stuff, I don't think we probably want void parking on Main Street and stuff, just for the fact that you want people to, you know, we have clients come in town and that kind of thing, you know, you guys are visiting that, that street area, especially the shops across the street, you know, whether it's, you know, restaurants that are currently their parents' place.
Yeah. I appreciate your desire to keep it looking historical and to bring it back, I mean, that's, that's one of my goals, we're going to be on to, is that that's super important to me, I think our Main Street is really cool and unique, and I want it to look like it did in its heydays, when it came down to heydays, so. I love the fact that we're going to keep the windows white and red brick, it's going to stay, and, you know, I think that's super important.
So, yeah, I mean, for us, you know, obviously, we'll be back, you know, and things, but in the meantime, you can as well, we can reach out, you know, and give a plan and stuff like that, questions, I don't know exactly all the appropriate channels, how it works, you know, as far as, you know, committees and all that kind of stuff, how you need to operate, you know, but, you know, we're obviously prepared to.
And then right now, or when we're at the things, structural has started, doing their calculations, and so we're going to be designing them to make sure they're there, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the engineering, mechanical and such, so we haven't got that far, but we're hoping to, I wanted to make sure that we were good in the overall.
You know, included in your packet was what the site plan review, the criteria, does the proposed site plan meet the following criteria? And, you know, it talks about zoning regulations and subdivisions, but you brought up a couple of things in this discussion, which would be part of the formal criteria, as far as will the development be compatible with the surrounding area? You know, you have to say yes or no to that. And does the, does the proposal conform with the customary engineering standards, or they're going to have a whole engineering, you know, plan set up for it? But then, the other thing was, are the street paths, walkways, and driveways located such that they enhance safety and minimize any adverse traffic, traffic impact on the surrounding area? You've brought up a couple of questions, and, you know, that's the type of, that eventually you'll have to say yes and no to, but you've, you've started to have that discussion, letting know a couple of things. And then the final one was, as far as for the planning commission, was to have the proposed building, structures, walkways, roads, driveways, open space, and parking lots been located, preserve existing off-site views and create desirable onsite views, conserve, this is a whole long list of stuff, but I think you've asked a couple of those things too, and then complimentary about it's preserving what it needs to, as far as views for the neighboring properties, but then also, and minimizing any adverse effects to the neighboring properties, and so it's meeting those goals, so, but you've asked a couple of questions regarding that as well, or made comments. So, on any site plan review that, you know, it has the other things, resulting with subdivision and comp plan, you'll have some information from the building official and the site plan review to help you answer that question, but you are asking the questions for the site plan review that should be asked. And that's all it is, it's really just trying to make, it's not trying to prevent any proposals from happening, it's just trying to make any proposals as best as it can be for the community. And that's really all this process is about, so. I'm just trying.
Yep.
Guide the discussion.
For us to, what are, what are the, what's the pathway for us to be able to, you know, just on a day-to-day basis, ask questions in regards to, you know, that we might have and so many and different things, I don't know, I might be speaking out of turn, if you might know all that, you know?
I don't know the whole thing, but, yeah, I definitely would have questions, and maybe that is going into the, the department.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be calling Jennifer, calling myself, and asking those questions, we may not have immediate response, or we may, and we'll be able to get that answered as soon as we can.
It sounds like your goals are what our goals are, so I'd like to hear that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. You're up.
And I'll wait till you guys get a copy of it.
Let's listen.
Yes.
Do you have one with you?
I do, I've printed out, I've copied it. I'll begin it over you guys already.
You can go ahead.
So, I'm representing the Goodland K O A, we just, the company just brought the property out April twenty-ninth, and we are looking at different expansion opportunities that we have on that property within the confines of the existing quarters. Right now, we are adding four deluxe pet park sites onto our property, it's going to be right in front of the building, in the strip, right leading up to the driveway.
Excuse me, just for a minute, what's your name?
Oh, Sean, sorry about that.
Sean, what?
Sean Donovan, S E A N, and E O D N.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So, we're going to be adding four deluxe pet park sites, what it's going to entail is, they're going to be fifty, thirty, twenty amp sites, they're going to have a concrete patio, and they're going to have patio furniture on it, along with, each of them are going to have their own individual dog park sites. They're going to be gravel sites, and on the next page, it shows you an example, a graphic of what one of them are going to look like in the area, which is going to be the location. The sites are going to average about a hundred feet long in length, just to be able to accommodate the newer rigs that are coming in, that are going to be forty-five, they're towing a car trail or another thing. And the point of this is, one is to bring more revenue to the campground, but we believe bringing more revenue to the campground will also bring more revenue to the area because of people coming in to, come to go, or if they're just passing by, they're going to be interacting with the restaurants and the stores in the area. And if you look at the final page, it's the criteria of our pet park sites, and what our paddles are going to be looking like, and an example of what our pet parks will look like. These specifications are set by K O A corporate, they're what corporate requires in order for it to be considered a deluxe patio, and what they require in order for a pet park.
Does this thing tree?
Um, they, yes, we are going to be putting more trees into the sites, and as LaFrazo will be adding at least ten more trees onto the area. We did end up having to take down a couple of them, just because of the location of where the sites are going to end up being, it just be tough for the campers to get into those sites.
So, you're laying cement in there for the pads and everything, or?
Well, they're going to be parking on gravel, but the patio will be cement.
Okay. I've gone by that, seen kind of what you're doing. I was curious.
And we're hoping to have it done by the beginning of July.
Well, that'd be a good time.
Um, they're capable, they are working on with S and T, and also putting in the electric vessel, as far as I know, they have one more site where they have to finish up the water plumbing for the hydrant, but the sewage and all the rest are hard to finish on the other site. So, they're moving at a pretty quick pace, they're pretty much know about barring any sort of unforeseen, that will be done in July, if not possibly sooner. We do plan on having our K O A new room person coming out and doing a grand opening for those sites. And so, we invite you guys, we'll give you guys a date on what that happens, we'll invite you guys to come out and experience the grand opening of those sites.
Looks nice.
They are, in the future, looking to expand north.
Yeah.
On the back side, yeah.
On the north side of the three acres, we're looking at adding twenty-five to thirty sites in that area, and some of those are going to be, in that they will be deluxe sites, just so we can accommodate the bigger rigs. Because right now, we just have, we just finished another five, upgrading thirty amp sites to fifty amp sites, so we have a total of twelve, thirteen, fifty amp sites, and so we are wanting to accommodate more fifty amp sites, so we can have more rigs come into the area.
I've gone out there three days in a row, it's been four.
It has.
Yeah, it's, I was just going to ask, assuming you guys are probably operating capacity, if you're thinking about that expansion, do you think there's, the business is there to support our home?
Absolutely.
A lot of running up and down the freeway.
When it comes to our bigger rigs, fifty amp rigs, I have to turn people late, because I don't have any available for them. And when we're, majority of the guests are coming with their pets, the joke is among the K O A circle is, K O A stands for kennels in America, because everyone is traveling with their pets. And so, we are trying to not only accommodate the owners, but we want to accommodate their pets too, and so we see a lot of people looking to use, we have other parks, such as Pigeon Forge Tucson in Arizona, where they have these pet homes established, and they are the most popular out there in underground.
Just like curiosity, I'm going to ask you, where are your next closest K O A stop?
Um, you're looking about an hour and a half to two hours, yes, I'm not going one direction, and I'm going to have to look, I'm not sure what it is going in the opposite direction, but I know for sure about an hour.
Maybe you might just look with the other side.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, you got the wagons.
So, that's one.
There might be one in McKee.
I think there's a campground out there, and I don't think it feels like a K O A.
Well, that'll be a good draw for Goodland, you know, given it's a long ways to the next K O A, upgrade their site, it's a good reason to stay. I know when you travel, our, our B T O is his favorite topic, because we have a vet. Cool. Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, thank you. All right, guys, let me show you my little project.
I'll talk together, I'm out here. So, we've been working on ten fifteen Main Street, which is a former, we've seen a chiropractor building, my wife and I acquired that in March, I guess, so the first page is what the, basically, I would say the current floor plan, we're almost done with the project, but this is what it looked like when we bought it, so it was basically an office space, obviously it's a chiropractor office, it was four little offices, a kitchenette, an entry room, a lobby, a reception area, and one bathroom. Upstairs was two more offices and just a huge oval. Upstairs was two more offices and just a huge, open area that they call the black hole. And it was a little scary. So, our initial plan was to make it office space, and then, right after we bought the building, we got hooked up with Scott of Fullwider, who has a dance studio. She was looking for a new home, something bigger where she could grow her business. And so, it worked out real well that she's gonna be the tenant in there. So, we're basically converting it into a dance studio for her and her business. So if you go into the next page, you can kinda see what we've done. Most of the project has been cosmetic, although there are some structural changes, and some electrical, and some plumbing, and some H V A C. So, on the first floor, we removed three walls, essentially took out two, the two front offices to open that up into a big dance room. The wall in the middle of the building that runs east and west was structural, so we had to have a main engineer for that, and it's a monster. It's like a twenty-four inches tall, I think, and about six inches wide. It was a project to get that in there, but we did that. The other walls that we moved or removed, not structural walls, they're just partition walls. But it gave her a twenty-three by twenty-four room, right there, big open space for her main dance floor. While we had everything torn apart, it was good times to upgrade some electrical in the building, also some plumbing, so we changed what was the entry room into a new ADA bathroom. The existing bathroom in the back was ADA compliant, but it was on a very small side and it's not easy to access for, you know, it's much better as a private bathroom than a public bathroom. So, we were able to create a very nice sized ADA accessible bathroom on the main floor for her. And then, we relocated, the main doorway through the building was right in the center, we relocated that to the side just to make the floor for the dance floor look better. Upstairs, we took one of those offices and created a second bathroom, just to service that floor. And it's just a standard bath. And then, we took the big black hole and created another dance room for her, and that one's like twenty-four by forty-two. So it's a bigger, a nice big open space up there. As far as structural changes, I kinda already explained that. Essentially, it was installing that gigantic beam, and you can kinda see the specs there. And then, the next page is just a summary of electrical plumbing and H V A C changes. So, while we had the walls apart, we switched some wiring and some lighting around just to make it more easy or better, better to use it than we had. Cleaned up a lot of outlets that didn't make sense, especially in the bathroom, an outlet never sold. So, we cleaned all that out just to not have a, a sore back there. We put a new sub panel in on the second floor which services the entire second floor now instead of it coming out of the main panel. Plumbing wise, of course, we added that new ADA bathroom and we added the second bathroom upstairs, so that's all, all new plumbing. And then, we had to relocate the vent. It came out right in the middle of that big room upstairs, so we relocated it to a sidewall so that it was out of the way. H V A C is still pending because all the contractors are super backed up, so really late June, early July for H V A C, but essentially what we're doing is adding a second unit on that second floor. So, her first, we did it on the first floor service the whole building before, but not very well. It was definitely underpowered for the space, so it will just service the main floor and then a new system will service the second floor. So, hopefully later, somewhere mid-summer, we'll get that done. So, and then the last page is just some of the cosmetic changes, obviously the new drywall we tore things out, we painted the whole building, we got new flooring all the way through the building. I didn't put it on there, but all of the bathrooms have new stalls in them. And it's gonna be a really nice upgraded space, and for Sky's business, it gives her an opportunity to really grow. That's our project.
Looking good.
Just like with the previous proposals, you know, although there really isn't much on the outside of his proposal, then it doesn't affect the neighboring properties, you know, will the development be compatible with the surrounding area? Well, the building's the same. You know, and does the, you know, he's upgrading different things and meeting engineering standards for that, and is going through the permitting process to get that done. And are the street paths, walkways, and driveways located? Well, it's gonna be the same one. It's gonna re-look at Kate's dance business, but it was already on Main Street, so it's two blocks, although there's more businesses functional in that block than a thousand block on Main Street. So there'll be some parking, but that's with that business.
Probably one challenge is, but a lot of her business is just dropping their kids off and they're going, so it's not, you know, they're not there a long time. There is a pretty significant amount of parking in the back of the building, probably park three or four yards back there, so that's where her employees will park and she will attend. So, I don't think there'll be a big parking in the back, but it'll change it for sure in that, that block, that tenth to eleventh to tenth street is a busy, busy block.
Well, her stuff is at a different time period.
That's right. But apparently, she operates in the evening, so most of her traffic is after everyone else is closed.
And you're not doing too much with the building, that will affect the neighbors as far as the big long question at the end, so.
Yeah, nothing changes on the outside, except for she's gonna put some, you know, she'll put her signage up and we're gonna do some things. She wants to do what, like what Vision Works has on their windows with the, have the bases and all that, she wants to do that on the windows up front, but with, using, actually using her dancers. So, it'll be really cool.
Thank you, Sean.
Good.
It's morning, five o'clock, is that it?
Well, if I can get back at, give me a time open my. Glad I'm, I have a little punch to us to do, but the major units are done.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like planning meeting organization.
Well, you gotta taste some things tonight. What the planning commission does, you had to describe what you guys had before you filled out the application, as you filled out the application. Become a member of the planning commission. But, um, it's in, if you, project books are in the procedure manual, right at the very peak, if you go towards the back of the book, it says procedure manual. And it says the role of each participant after the first couple pages, if it says.
Can I run, when I touch and grab my book?
Sure.
Well, this book has all the codes, everything in it?
It has the one that you guys would be dealing with.
Okay.
The names, as far as the zoning regulations, the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
And then it also has a copy of the comprehensive plan. And that's probably the biggest document you guys would want, eventually.
Okay.
Currently outdated comprehensive.
Is that on two thousand and two, four three year old?
It was two thousand.
Yeah, it was around two thousand.
No, not that much, I mean, it's a lot like twenty-two.
Apparently.
I thought these were just scare tactics or something. Uh, just from the diagram, it says procedure manual.
Yeah.
And then, article one, the role of each participant. And that's all I wanted to kinda go. I also have the ethical stuff, it was included. We'll just go through this real quick. You know, it says, the purpose of city's zoning regulations and subdivision regulations is to promote or with the role in rebuilding the city. Well, good luck.
There's a story on it.
And it's, it's. They put forth this procedure manual, and the purpose of it is to try, you know, the proper administration of the city's zoning and the subdivision. And what this first part does is the general role of each participant. So, the third paragraph says, the power to enact zoning and subdivision regulations. Now, the zoning is whether it's commercial or residential or industrial. You know, and you really want those close to each other, that's the whole process of zone. And then, the subdivision is how do you take a big core section of vacant property and subdivide it into small parts? What's the process for doing that? So, they may seem like big words, but that's really all it is. But it says, the power to enact zoning and subdivision regulations has been granted to cities and counties by the state enabling legislation. So that's why some of our stuffs have to follow state rules. But then, these statutes require the participation of three separate bodies in the process of administering regulations. You have the planning commission, the board of zoning appeals, and the government body, which in this city is the city commission. You know, Aaron, as the mayor or as a commissioner, is part of that body, the government body. But, and then the other two bodies in this town are combined into one, the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals. Just like I talked about, they're very suspicious. You're acting as the board of zoning appeals, but in this city, it's within the planning commission's authority. So. So then, good luck, the planning commission has this title, we have the comprehensive plan, which in order to implement land use regulations, the planning commission has about the city plan, a comprehensive plan. And oftentimes, people go comprehensive plan, that's such a big word, isn't it? I was just, the plan to the city, and that's what we wanna do, for the physical development of the municipality. And then, before adopting or amending the plan, the planning commission must hold a public hearing. So, we publish in the newspaper and we hold a public hearing. But a lot of times, we'll go review the whole comprehensive plan and do it by section by section, and then, once we have a whole plan, then we'll set a public hearing and ask them to have their conference. And that's why, it's a, it's a big task. So that's why they haven't done it since two thousand. I mean, it's not a fault, you know, but it's a big task, and you gotta have people willing to go through it again, so. And then, after adopting the plan, a copy should be recorded in the office as the county executive branch, so that anybody can look it up, you know. So you have the comprehensive plan, the second one is the zoning regulations. The planning commission is primarily an advisory one, and in the zoning regulations, the primary duty of the planning commission is to hold a public hearing where public opinion can be expressed regarding proposed rezoning, conditional use permits, and zoning text amendments. Like if we wanna change, add another use to residential, single family residential, saying that they can have this type of use in single family residential. We would have a text amendment, we would have a public hearing with the planning commission, and then you guys would make the recommendations to the city commission, and then they would approve it regardless. So, um, in this sense, the planning commission is a sounding board for community attitudes toward development. And then, you just establish the facts around each development issue as clear as possible, and then, you adopt the recommendation to the government body. And so, you adopt the recommendation, and you can recommend to approve it, you can recommend to disapprove it, it still goes to the city commission, and they can override you, or send it back for additional consideration, you know, they can do a couple of things. They don't just have to approve it. And then, the next one is, on the turn of page, is subdivision regulations. The planning commission is responsible for approving, or approving with conditions, or disapproving both preliminary and final plans. Now, we haven't had a lot of that in this town over the last couple decades, but if we went to have some growth, then we'd have a new parcel of land, and they would have a preliminary plot and a final plot. The preliminary plot, you really gotta worry about rightways and easements, make sure there's utility easements, make sure there's pathways to separate piece of property, um, and there's a whole list of different things, and you go through it. That's the major work, is the preliminary plot. And then, the final plot is really, I like to call it the drawing of lines in the map. And then, they, they'll have the easements identified or additional conditions identified with that. So, um, and then, there's definite submission standards, I think that happens. And then, you acted as the board of zoning appeals tonight, the board of zoning appeals is primarily quasi judicial body rather than advisory legislative one. And that, your zoning regulations, as you approved tonight, doesn't zone you out, you're the final authority. If somebody has a grievance against it, they could appeal it, but it appeals to court. It goes to, and that's why it's called quasi judicial, is because the next step is judicial. So you're like halfway judicial, and that's why there's, and we'll probably start doing that, and we'll need to have time to set that forward as far as the hearing procedure. But if you didn't get happy, having a new procedure, then it's very, then it's, um, it's a lot harder for anything to be overturned in court afterward, because you didn't do it the right way. The court's not gonna quibble about what your decision is. Um, they're not, they wanna make sure that you did it the right way. They're not as concerned whether it's yes or no, unless you do it just arbitrarily and just, well, we're not even gonna consider whether it's a hardship or the spirited intent of zoning, we won't say anything about it. We just think it's a good idea if you're familiar enough to do it. Well, then, if somebody appealed, you didn't do it the right way, you know.
Make sure you follow the procedures.
Right, right. So, and you can read through the rest of that. Um, and then, the government body, their, government body consists of the mayor and the city commission, and has responsibility for enacting and amending the city's comprehensive plan and the city's zoning regulations after consideration of the recommendations of the planning commission. So, they do the same thing with comprehensive plan in overall. You guys work on it, work on it, work on it, then you have a public hearing, and then you recommend it for approval to the city commission, and then the city commission approves it, and then implements as a result. And this responsibility for the city commission includes amending the text of the city's own, you know, if we have a zone, uh, something in the zoning regulations we wanna update, uh, zoning history map, that's, um, there's a map down in my office. And I think there's one in Jeff's office that's not on here in the room, but we'll make sure we have that one. There's several of them, but that's like the zoning map.
They don't say it.
Here, is the zoning map. Yep, that is on the map. And so, you know, the purple is the central business district, uh, the green is the general business district, um, anything in white is single family residential. It was smaller. And the maroon type stuff is the multi-family.
Okay.
The blue at the top is the airport, which is its own district. But, um, I actually talked to someone today about, they're thinking of wanting to buy a property and they're wanting to request a zone change, changing from commercial to residential, so. Changing from commercial to residential, so. I went through the steps for her and told her the obstacles that would need to, and it come, you know, come to your consideration, so. As people talk about houses and different properties, that's what happens, is then people want to do something in a different place than what's stated on the map. So, then they say, "Well, can I get a change of zone?" And like a lady who came in the office today says, "Well, I only thought I needed to just talk to you." And you would say, "Yes, and I could just do it." I said, "No, it doesn't work that way." It has to, we have to publish in the newspaper, we have to send letters to all the name下的residents, we have to let everybody know that you want to do this. And then, two boards have to say yes with the zone change. This board has to recommend, and they, you guys can recommend this as approval. And the city commission can override, but that's another rule for that. But generally, we need both boards to agree, and yes, this is a good idea. So.
Can I have a real quick?
Sir, uh, we are the, our planning commission, are you included on that? Are you a part of us? No, we're, I'm just staff, I'm just like Jeff.
Okay.
And we're just staff liaison. We don't have a vote. We wouldn't.
Okay. So, when we have these meetings, you won't be doing this like you did tonight, or there's something we?
Well, I, I'll be here.
Okay.
One of us will definitely be here.
Okay.
Probably both of us would be here.
That's probably, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's where I always kind of go. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Well, both Jeff and I attended a, um, they had a planning and zoning municipal training to do by the league of Kansas City Councils. League of Cities. Um, they have trainings all throughout the year, but that one specifically for planning and zoning by the city attorney for Derby. She was previously the city attorney for Lauren. And then, there was also the planner, the director of planning, I forget, he's a special advisor, um, for Derby. But then, he had previously worked for us, actually knew him previously. Uh, he worked for Central County. And he presented some issues out in the county that were here in Clearwater, um, different zoning issues. So, but their experience, we had been down and went through a bunch of the, you know, updating, trying to get information. So, it describes the role of each participant, and then staff prepares these documents for them. And there was something here, what describes how each of these is stored. Oh, and the planning commission bylaws, turn a couple pages to the article three. It's within this. Um, and if we turn to page eight, which shows on the bottom. And this is right after what I read, she's regarding the chair or vice chair and secretary. But then, it talks about the duties of the building official or designated. And the building official or designated person, staff person shall perform, perform the following duties. Well, any duty set forth by you guys in the government body. But, we will meet with applicants prior to their application submitted. And then, acceptable applications for the planning commission is then denied. We'll draft or have staff reports, and just like the baron's request tonight. And that may be, you know, there's so much paper, you guys aren't used to it yet. But we'll have the application as the applicant submitted it, and then we'll have a staff report. And the staff report reviews what the applicant put in his application. And then, tries to give you a recommendation from the staff point of view, whether it meets the criteria or not. Um, this is not a lot of paper for the first meeting. I'm just trying to set the foundation for you guys for going forward, so. Um, so we draft or have staff reports. Um, we send you the agenda, and we'll send it electronically, we can have it in paper form if it's wanted. Um, we inform the applicants of decisions. I always tell an applicant, it's better if you're you. So, you guys can ask questions of the applicant. Or, um, they can put, they'll put the best base on their proposals, and it's, but sometimes you have out-of-town applicants and it can't be. So, all you have is the paper. Their paper application. Um, and then, we maintain the record of the planning commission and then other duties, as requested by you guys. And then, it talks about the meeting, the conduct of the meeting. Um, and you guys can look through that, but I think that's a good start for you guys to understand. They also have a couple more pages, on page ten there, it shows here. And, this is a good, this, uh, letter C there towards the bottom. Says, "Staff presents the agenda item, then you ask questions about staff. And then, the proponents make the presentation. And then, if there's any opponents, they'll make the presentation." Um, the applicant can make the rebuttal. And then, the staff presents the matter, because there's what actual questions you need to answer. And then, you can ask any questions you may have. A proponent, an opponent, or staff, and then that's, um, a motion. And that's really an important thing. The actual decision is making, you, you make a motion, and then you vote on a motion. That's the actual action. Unless, or, like I said earlier, just as these consensus is saying, staff take care of the sector. But most of the time, the action is, can I have a motion? And the US chair now, that's how you can say, okay. That's enough talking. Can I, let's make a decision.
Okay.
And, uh, go further.
Were there any times where we may need to table it? When you have more discussion, or do we need to make that decision at the end of the meeting?
Usually, you want to do that at the beginning. There are times when you're asking for additional information. I've had difficult, been involved with difficult baron's requests that have asked for additional information. Um, like, uh, different engineering reports to be provided, um, that it could. But it's rare. You'd rather, you've notified the public, said it was going to be at this date and this time. You should have a decision. Um, and, uh, but if you want to ask to delay it or do it, then make a motion doable. There'll probably be a little bit discussion how we do that. And then, make a motion, I take this as a tell. And then, you set a specific date. And we'll try and maybe on a regular basis, whatever, if it's the first Tuesday of month, which would be kind of tough for us, because it's the day after the first Monday of the month.
I mean, the first Wednesday of the month, so.
It'd be all on the way.
I'm flustered.
You know, we have a baron's request coming up in two weeks. Um, since we added, timing-wise, sometimes that'll occur, I'll ask you guys if that's possible. Just as far as in order to provide the timeliness of the first request. Does that help?
Yeah.
But that's just the beginning. I mean, there's all types of stuff to explain this. As we go through supplement meetings this year, have on the agenda a review of how comprehensive. A review of our zoning regulations, subdivision. But, a lot of it is a little bit of experience, just like the baron's request for a certain size garage. You know? The next baron's request is a garden garage as well. So, but we'll have that in our agenda. And we'll try to have the agenda packed to you, at least before the weekend before, when everything's done. So, then you have a few days until we review it. Not just the night before. So. So, does this make you more enthusiastic or less enthusiastic about certain ones?
Hanging on right now. It can be interesting.
It would be exciting for the experience, and, you know, I think personally it's going to be a big challenge, but just being born well by the streets of the city is really good.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. And it's nice to hear and see what people are bringing to the table here.
See the ideas people are bringing in. I think it's, it's good.
Like I said, I've gotten a lot of phone calls and questions on this. One on this very question, and the other one, we're taking two, and I've got another, the two gentlemen will go visit with tomorrow. All this is new to the public, they're not used to getting this, so they're reaching out. I had one lady live across the street, "Do I got to tear my garage down?" Man, I found out where she was and went to visit with her. "No, ma'am, I'll show you what's going on to the property and, oh, I had no problem with that." So, I said, "All this is kind of new to everybody." It's, it's a good thing, because it'll get the word out, and people will figure out the right way to do it, just not just build it. And they find most of the time. Do this the right way. I don't think anybody's opposed to progress as well, as long as it's going the right way. It's just under the table stuff, or nobody's going to look, or I'll pay fine, they catch me, that's no good for anybody.
Right. Well, I had a conversation with Ryan again, I mean, I've talked to him several times, the previous building official, who's also still fire chief. He had a lot on his plate. The previous planning commission several years ago, this was, I mean, long before Aaron served on the city commission or anything else. Back when they had a, people serving on the planning commission in early 2010s, they basically told Brian, in the site plan review process, "Well, you just go ahead and do it." Because he don't know the rules. But I think this is beneficial for the site plan review process to have it brought to the public. And like I said earlier, I mean, it's not trying to prevent something. I mean, and, but, most severe cases, yeah, but it's more about trying to make whatever plan they have the best. Or make it a little bit better. Um, it's not trying to, you know, really harm someone. So, I think it is beneficial, and it's not trying to slow anybody up.
Well, I think it evens out the planning field for everybody too, where the one guy, "Oh, I do this guy do this, and this guy can't do this," you know? Everybody's all, playing by the same rules. It's going to be the same process, kind of like what your session's been.
Yeah.
Two questions we have, just that as I ran in the step of saying, I see that this board is supposed to be a commission of at least seven members. So, I assume you just know a good number?
No, and it actually, I think it was five, you know, it came up seven. But five is full. Um, or it could be considered a full. Um, and, no, we have not had the additional applications. So, to recruit or encourage other people, and they're appointed by the city commission. Um, and if, in a more extreme case, there can be other people by the city commission. But, um, we would like, you know, good people to step up. And, and just tonight going through this, and we'll post this video on the city's website, you know, let people know what is involved. And, a lot of people may think, "Oh, I can't be involved with that." That's too much, I want that decision to be controversial. Um, there might be eventually controversial subjects. But, that's why I want to go over with you, just like the hearing procedure. Get in good habits, and then, when the pressure's really on, we're used to doing it that way. So, um, and, and then it get, and then it's easier to weather. Um, and it's easier to have these meetings, because you have structure. And it doesn't become harder than it should be. And doesn't make that a hard decision. But, I would encourage anybody who's interested, you know, there. Planning commission is kind of a neat board to be a part of. Because you have this variety of, and just like I have tonight. We have baron's request, then we have site plan reviews, and then, we're talking about zoning changes, or zoning text amendments, or, um, eventually, hopefully sometime, preliminary flats and final flats, how people actually develop properties. Um, and you get to be part of that conversation.
So, the second question, last question I have, so we've mentioned a couple of times, and I agree with you, that we were due first comprehensive, but what's the expectation for upcoming comprehensive?
I know, I have asked them, the city commission, for a little bit of budget, that I would like to use an expert or consultant.
Sure, yeah, I noticed this was a great question. Obviously, it's a great reason.
Right. Um, you know, you end up with a contract for assistance, and then that person helps guide us through what that would be. Um, it takes a little bit, it takes about a year to do that. Because you only take a certain chunk each week, unless you guys want to have four or five RME. I don't think you want to. Yeah. But so, um, that's generally, so if we would budget it, and we can start on it, we may start discussing the project, just so you become familiar with it. But then, for the actual revision of comprehensive plan, it's about a year on process. So.
I may speak out of turn for a moment.
No, go ahead.
And this is, by no means a commission meeting or anything, you know, this is my, I think it would be important for...
Now, I think it would be important for the commission and you guys to all have a meeting together at some point. Maybe just kind of look over the plan as a whole. Because it's something that I know, knowing I'm in my third year in the in the commission, and this this year before, we really spent any time discussing that or looking at it at all. And I feel like it's been an oversight for many, many, many years now. The the comprehensive plan and then also your board in general, along with some other boards. And I know that we're trying to focus, and by we, I mean me, because I'm speaking for myself, uh on trying to, you know, fill boards and, you know, I think this is. In my own opinion, probably the most important board that we have regarding growth and betterment of the community as a whole and what this board is meant to accomplish. You know, and I really hope that we can get you guys filled out in the near future and get a full board. And I think once people see what you guys are doing and what's going on with it, I think. Or potential, yeah, and I I think, yeah, once people will be more interested in being involved and stuff, once they see what it, because this is a foreign thing to most people to say, Steve, because like I said, it hasn't been filled in a long, long time. But I do agree that, you know, I know the comprehensive plan is is important for us and I think the first step is becoming familiar with what's already there. Not just for you guys, but for us as well.
And it's important to have that communication between the planning commission and the city commission. And have a meeting every once in a while. So that there's good communication between you two. Um so that the general principle, now there's always going to be individual cases that will have any circumstances. But what are the general principles going forward? You want that. And there'll always be some barriers between the planning commission and the city commission. But you want to go on both in the same general. But to set up, and then that'll give you a good, would be a good kickoff. For both boards to look over the comprehensive plan overall. Maybe have a couple of meetings with you guys to start getting familiar with it. Before we meet with the city commission and then then doing, you know. Then that kicks off, okay. Where do you see? What are the obstacles that come up because the comprehensive plan is from two thousand instead of twenty twenty two? Sometime in the last decade. Normally you want to do a major update to your comprehensive plan every ten to fifteen years. But then you do a review of the comprehensive, you do a little bit of review every single year. But then every five years or so, you do an update. But then the major hall is after two or three. Any more questions, Matt?
So I know it sounds like a lot. Starting point, just the board I've been, you know, the construction board, it was a, it was a lot to start. These guys, when you get through one book and they're a little bit more at ease because they're comfortable now and it was, they're getting it, so. It helped a lot. They're enjoying what they're doing. They're crazy, but they're enjoying it.
Yeah, his construction board, they're going through the plumbing code and eventually, they just have the plumbing code, which was, what was the old one? Well, that's on her. Ninety ninety four plumbing code. And they just finished reviewing the twenty eighteen Nash plumbing. And normally those codes come out every three years. And it is not that you have to update it one within the last three years, but a lot of communities around are in. On twenty twelve, twenty fourteen, it's different time period. And then they'll be looking through the electrical code. They'll be looking through the mechanical code. They'll be looking through the international residential code and the commercial.
Bar code, this is the building code. There's quite a few to do, so we would like to.
Yeah, we've seen it. We've got electrical one.
Oh, that's that one with Ryan. Yes, it was his thought too. Oh, wow.
Now, if you have more questions, and I thank you for the questions you have. I appreciate you guys being prepared tonight. They have some social stuff, then there's just a motion for adjournment. And then we can go on.
Do we have to do these reports?
Did I have something on that to say this one?
Yeah. This report, but you know, will we make the motion to approve it? Do we have to get that report?
No, staff will. So and then if there's anything to be signed on, right, the chair. And then we'll produce the minutes that you'll approve at the next meeting.
Before we turn to a question on that next meeting, which is, because I guess two two weeks from now, we got another request, appropriate request.
Verus request, right. That'll be the next meeting. And then what would be a good regular time for you guys to meet?
I mean, for the most part.
I'm good anytime. It's the first Monday of the month. That's usually when I can, which is your time anyway.
We're tight.
Would it be better for you guys to move on like the second, the second week? So you're not back to back to back meetings?
It doesn't matter to me, so. I don't care. That's up to you guys, whatever. I'm pretty flexible on my evenings. I know what's coming, so. I'm certainly retired, so it doesn't matter. But whatever fits in your guys' schedule, I know what you do here.
Yeah, it's it's yes, so.
If you don't know right on hand now, I mean, I guess it'll come up.
I was just going to suggest that maybe we just do like the second Tuesday of the month and then that doesn't pout these guys on the first week of the month, just back to back meetings. Give them a night off and then, because I think for the rest of us, it sounds like we can.
The other thing that helps with is that the agenda packet like this week or last week, when we're putting these agenda packets, we're putting the agenda packet together for the city commission. And you guys. And the construction board all in the same week, that gets to be.
Administrative will be easier.
Yeah. Trying to get all the documents to.
All right, with that, I'll leave you to your motion.
And I meant the motion for adjournment.
Nobody wants to stay. We're out.